Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Laws in 1975, this meeting notice was sent to the Asbury Park Press on May 15, 2018, and has been duly advertised in the Asbury Park Press issue of May 18, 2018. All municipal clerks of the townships and boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified, and the requirements of posting of notices have been met on May 15, 2018. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Mr. Toscano, is there anything we need to add to the agenda minutes?
Yes, Mr. President. For the executive session, prior to going into executive session, the following matters were announced as additional items. The first is for exception number three. In addition to the harassment, intimidation, and bullying report, the board also discussed a student discipline matter. As it relates to item number seven, the board discussed several items. The first being a contract negotiation, specifically negotiation with the Department of Education as it relates to the upcoming referendum. Another item that the board discussed was contract negotiation, special law enforcement, Class III officers, the shared services agreements, an update on that. Also, in that same item, the board discussed litigation matter, OAL docket number 11522-18, And also, in that same box, the board discussed matters of attorney-client privilege, including student speech issues. Those were the additional items.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to C1, looking to approve the meeting minutes from our meeting on July 23. Does anybody want to put forth a motion to adopt the resolution accepting the minutes for July 23?
Motion.
Okay. Got that? All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Astetola?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Epstein.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mrs. Spankhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Epstein.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes. All right. Decommunications. Mr. Secretary, were there any communications received since our last meeting the board needs to be aware of?
Communications received are distributed to the board along the way and kept on file at the office of the board secretary.
All right. Superintendent's report, Mr. Sampson.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Messinger. So, a number of items this evening. First and foremost, the opening of the new school year is upon us, which means that the last couple of weeks have been particularly busy. But I want to know, and I know Mr. LaGravenus is here this evening. Last Friday, Mr. Boyce and I, along with Mr. LaGravenus, completed our annual district walk-through, and this is where we literally walk pretty much every inch of the district, spend the entire day in the six buildings to take a look at, A, the status of the buildings, but B, the progress along a number of our summer projects and what that entails. This year was particularly important because we were reviewing all of the schematics for the unit lunch, which is new for the upcoming school year. You know, placement of, from tables to making sure that we were compliant with the requests of the fire marshals and making sure that everything was situated the way it needed to be across the building. It's been a lot of work this summer. But we also were able to make some really dramatic changes to some of our classroom space, some of our learning space. The media center at Freehold High School was redone, looks fantastic. You know, that's our oldest building, certainly, but a beautiful building, Mrs. Jewell, right? But, you know, that requires some upkeep, and we put a lot of work into the media center there. And a number of classrooms across the district, one of the things that we've been trying to do over time each year is just to update, you know, a couple of classrooms in every high school each summer, really to embrace what learning should look like in 2018 and not 1958. And that's a lot of work. You know, our buildings, we've retrofitted a lot of things over our buildings the past couple of years. I'm really proud over the learning spaces that we've created for our students, and, you know, the floors were immaculate, and so hats off to the B&amp;G crew. They really worked their tails off this past summer and couldn't be happier. You know, I think it was, Dr. Bleakley was sharing with me, his daughter was visiting him at Marlborough High School, and, you know, Marlborough was built in 1960, but the shine on the floors is so perfect, and we painted the hallways this summer, and his daughter asked him if this was a new building. No, it's not a new building, but it's a shiny one, and so proud of how our B&amp;G folks take care of the building. So, nice job, Mr. LaGravenus. Opening of school, we're, you know, we're ready at this point in time. We have our convocation scheduled for September 4th. In keeping with my tradition here for eight years, we gather everybody together in the Freehold Township auditorium. Thank you, Ms. Higley, for always hosting. And, you know, I have my talk each year with the faculty and staff centered around a theme, working off of, really, the whole child component of our strategic plan this year, and that will be the basis of my talk to the staff. And then we'll welcome incoming ninth graders the following day, and then all students will return on the 6th, and we will be ready to roll with the new school year. Lot happening in the buildings right now, lot happening at central office. Our supervisor week was this past week. We've had an incredible launch to the school year, really, you know, our goal development here in the district is pretty crystal clear, same goals as last year as we move forward, really working around making sure that what effective feedback looks like from all levels of the organization to improve experiences for children. I'm proud of that work. Dr. Hazel, Ms. Howell, CNI team have done a nice job with all of that over the past week. And busy across the board. You know, we are ready to roll, waiting on some final approvals for October 2 referendum, and we'll talk about the special meeting in a bit, but the work behind that October 2 referendum has been extreme. It's been really consuming over the past year or so. I think we've put together an exceptional plan that hits infrastructure, learning spaces, security, athletic fields across the district to assist in the long-term maintenance and excellence of this district. For those who haven't taken a look at the website, there's a website up called Insuring Excellence. It's on the homepage. It's an excellent link. It has all of the information about the referendum itself. All of the building principles and Mr. Boyce will be going out over the next couple of weeks to all of our municipal meetings to give the, make sure that the, our local elected officials understand clearly what the components of the referendum are, and being available to answer any questions from that neck of the woods. We feel real confident, and, you know, this was a long time in the making. You know, I came here in 2011. The need for a referendum was apparent then. We went through an energy savings improvement plan first, worked through that from 2012, 2013, saved the taxpayers millions of dollars in the lighting and energy upgrades that we did with that, and then waited patiently for the debt to come off the books from the construction of Coltsneck High School. That perfect storm has now arrived, so as we prepare to put this question before the voters on October 2, we can do that, making sure that we reinvest two-thirds of that debt, but kick a third of it back to the taxpayers. So regardless, taxes will be going down as that debt expires. So it's the perfect time. We've been good financial stewards, and I think that it sets the district up in a very positive place for the long term. Just a couple notes. We have our new staff orientation on Thursday, so we always have those folks up for a full day, a lot of training around the observation model, but that's also an opportunity for us to have about a 45-minute opening with them and discussion. I usually walk them through an instructional process. Looking forward to that. We have Dr. Richens, who is the Executive County Superintendent of Schools, coming to the district this Friday. The district is up for CUSAC evaluation this year, and that's the state monitoring component that all schools have to go through. It's going to be very interesting because one of the criteria that they judge you on is your park participation rate, and so it's a little bit difficult when you have tests that students can refuse to take, and then they judge you on whether or not students took the test. But we'll soldier through that, and what we asked Dr. Richens was kind enough to offer to come out ahead of the evaluation and answer any questions that we might have and go through the checklist. There are five different components to that. It's a very elaborate process, occurs every three years. It's like Groundhog Day. In 2015, I went down to the Senate Ed Committee and testified about CUSAC reform. Not much has changed. If anything, they've made it more cumbersome, so that's something that we'll be undergoing this year, but I certainly appreciate the county soup's willingness to come out and field questions ahead of that process so we can make sure that we're as prepared as we possibly can be for that. A few other notes. There's a policy update for the board as well. I sent something out to the policy committee maybe about a week or so ago. In typical fashion, a law was passed with no guidance on how to implement the law. That was the pass-the-trash legislation that we've been working under since June, but that guidance has just come out, and we're mandated to get that policy on our books prior to the start of the school year, prior to September 1, I believe. I'd shove somewhere around there. So we are, those policies were sent to the policy committee relatively quickly as a way to make sure that we got it onto this agenda so that we were compliant with what the state requires. And I feel very positive about the new schedule that will open the school year. I fully embrace the fact that the first couple of weeks of the school year will be very different. You know, I would not use the word chaotic, but I do think that every school district that we've talked to that's moved to a block schedule with the unit lunch has said, expect that the first couple of weeks will be really a learning process on all of your systems and what that looks like. And so, you know, our sort of marching orders, everybody is, there's no right or wrong way to do anything. Everybody, let's all learn from each other as we go through this process, and let's make sure that after a couple of weeks of the school year, we've got this down to a science. I think we're already there. I mean, when I talk to each of the custodial supervisors and the maintenance supervisors in each building, they could tell me exactly how long it took them to set up each room, break it down, what it looked like. They had already anticipated a number of problems that we've proactively worked around. I do think that the benefits of the schedule, you know, it's a very student-friendly schedule in terms of more instructional time, more variety in the school day. You don't have the same period, first period. You don't, in our late schools, our athletics that have traditionally had, students who participate in athletics often had to leave the last period early. Now that's a different last period each day, which we think is actually a positive, and I've received some questions about that. I just wanted to address that. And the schedule itself is, more approximates what students will go through in the college experience. So we feel really confident. We've spent three years engaging in professional development for our faculty and staff around student center instruction, and we are ready to roll with this schedule come next week. That concludes my report.
Moving on to the board reports. There was a curriculum and instruction committee meeting this evening, and several things were talked about. First issue with respect to summer academy. We got an update for 2018 and what transpired over the summer, and it was another good summer session. There was actually 130 students that were in the program for original credit. 12 of those came from outside the district, and in terms of offerings, there was two geometry classes, full section of Algebra I, so mathematics is always big in terms of that. With respect to credit recovery, there were 46 students there, and then with respect to AP Bridge, there were 224 students, and this has really proven to be a big help to the students as they transition into AP classes. And this year, the administration brought in prep for environmental science, so that was something good. Moving on to the IB program, we heard about the expansion there. Obviously, this is something that's thriving at Freehold Township High School. They're kicking it off in Howell now, and it really looks like by, for our students who are going to be graduating high school in the class of 2023, the IB program's going to be open up to kids from all the towns in our district. So if you live in Farmingdale, you could go to Howell High School. Well, you're already going to Howell High School. I mean, if you're, let's say you're from Marlborough, you could, and want IB, you could go take it at Freehold Township. So, we discussed that. There was also a discussion about the building capacity for the Career Pathways Grant. Our web design program is going to be our second program there in the fall, and Health Professions is being added. With respect to curriculum guides, you'll see on the agenda for tonight, there's approval of curriculum guides there, and coincidentally, I noticed that French II is on there. So I had brought up at the meeting about what's the story with French, because coincidentally, I saw on a Facebook page and also at the Marlborough High School freshman orientation last week, there was a parent or two concerned that their child took French in junior high school and could not take it at Marlborough High School because we were no longer offering it. And I found out that the sending K8s are not offering French anymore, with the exception of Howell High. So that really is the reason why in Marlborough, for instance, there is no French one at Marlborough High School. So discussion of that was sort of timely. We also heard about the yield report from our magna programs, and in part of our meeting of curriculum, we also had a discussion of onsite dual enrollment with respect to Brookdale. And the administration answered some questions I had with respect to the onsite programs and the ones where the students go to Brookdale and take the classes there. So that is what transpired at the curriculum committee meeting. There was no policy committee meeting, and Mr. Sampson had referenced what had transpired since the last policy committee, something that was not met about, but we have to implement anyway. And I guess there was also no finance committee since our last meeting on July 23. Okay. So we'll now move on to the public participation portion of the meeting. What?
May I do?
Yes. Mr. Boyce, please.
So on the back table, there should be an addendum, this color, for G3 and for G4. In addition to that, I have resolution, additional item to be added to G1, which is approval of resignation. So board, if you could add the name Darrell Burkhead, mathematics teacher, Manalapan High School. Effective date, August 10, 2018. Years of service, 18. Reason, personal. So add that to your G1. Also, a correction under Section G3 appointments for the school psychologist listed as Manalapan High School, and Desai is the last name. Kite. Catty Desai. I'm probably fairly close with that. The location should be Marlborough High School, not Manalapan, for the school psychologist listed in G3, and that's a correction. That's all I have. Mr. Messinger.
All right. Thank you. So with respect to public participation, our first speaker is going to be Tracy Ween from Howell, and to my fellow board members, Ms. Ween has handed out some comments that she would like to address, so you'll have a written version in front of you as she speaks. So Ms. Ween, please.
Hi, I'm Tracy Ween. I live at 56 Wingford, Corinna, Howell. I'm here with Matthew, who is here tonight. He's a junior at Howell High School. I'm here tonight to ask the board to your help in placing him in the Mercer County Technical Psychological Program. It's been a long, I don't want to add my words between, but it's been going on since May. Some of the people here are aware because there's been letters going up, and we've heard. I've had three children graduate from Howell High School. Matthew is my youngest, and he decides to do three electrical work. Early this year, Matthew applied for placement at Monmouth County. There are only 22 seats in the whole county, which, I don't know, it's like 52 school districts in Monmouth County. You're only allowed to apply for one program. You're not allowed to put down a subject choice. Getting in is very slim. So my nephew goes to Mercer County, and he's also a county resident. He goes to Allentown High School. So that was where I got the idea from. He basically didn't get into Monmouth and was told he could apply to Mercer, and he did. The school district did not bite them and paid for it. He's now going to be a senior. Matthew went to the open house. He seemed very interested in the program, which is what he wants to do. He was not offered to go to Monmouth County, who was denied, and Freehold Regional does not offer an electrical program, so Mercer County seems to be our only option. He was admitted to Mercer County. I tried to work with Howell High School. They pulled my application without my knowledge, and the only reason I failed out is because I called to find out deadlines, if one week we would be getting acceptance letters, and I was told by the administrator there, Lauren Corolla, I don't believe she's there anymore, but she, that my application was pulled by Howell High School. So I pick up the phone, I called Mr. Galatola, and he told Matthew into the office, sorry, I never do that shit. He called Matthew into the office and told him he couldn't go, couldn't go, and from May through, like, the end of the school year, Matthew has had several comments asked for him from the school, Mr. Galatola, who's the supervisor of Matthew, and Mr. Fondaville. That's who's got the call. So they, a few times they catch remarks like, you're not going, you know, book that, get over it, like, for no reason, they would call me into the office. It almost felt like harassment to me, and I called him because I was upset. I said, you know, I'm his mother, I'm still fighting this, and they refused to send transcripts, and so they kind of made me feel like I was doing something wrong, you know? All I've done is try to get Matthew into a program he was accepted to, and I think that's what a mom should do, invite her to my kid. So we're hardworking people, me and my husband, and I don't have the means to transport him. There's no way one of us can stop working for half-day program. It's the middle of the day. They start out at Howell High School, they leave in the afternoon in all the white jersey, but it's like a few hours here and a few hours there, so there's no way it's practical. I hired a lawyer to help with the issue. He filed a complaint because I didn't have what else to do. The case is still pending. The judge issued a statement in request for an merger relief. He wrote, "Here are the undersigned questions. The logic of the respondent is not the letter of the law, not the spirit of the law. Clearly, the spirit of the law is where they had formed shop and grid residents of the county where a program was offered, so they simply refused to attend. That is not the case here. Not paying for a program in a county simply because it is offered in the home county where the student has rejected due to class size and not being kind of the law. Education takes precedence over policy. Frankly, the respondent should be proud to have such an eager and forth-thinking and manner in his institution." So Matthew would be going to Monmouth if he got in, but he didn't. So we have no other option than to elect a program at Mercer. You know, a time to the mom, you have to tell your kid no, and this really isn't one of the times, you know? He should be able to go. That's, I feel like other school districts are paying more away. We're not a poor school district, you know? Now I have an attorney that, I have an attorney, and I'm going to court. I'm looking at the attorney, and you guys are paying an attorney to fight me, so it's wasted tax dollars, in my opinion. The tuition is only $5,000 for the whole year. The board would have paid tuition and transportation if they had gotten it. It's Monmouth, and we didn't. The Howell administration's denial seems arbitrary, given that Matthew has no other alternative. And I also feel, if I don't issue that, that they treat me and my son very unfairly and unprofessionally through this whole thing. It's been going on since May. The board can resolve this for me. I'm asking you to do that. I have three kids graduated from the district. I've never had a problem, I've never asked for anything. I'm asking you to just pay tuition and transportation so that you can do what you want with this It's, I don't see hundreds of thousands of kids applying for vocational schools, you know? It's not like I'm opening this big giant tour. I don't even know anyone else who goes. It's, you know? More kids should go. I also think it's true that our county has such a huge school district, and offers so little opportunity. So thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? With your permission. Yes, actually, the one thing I wanted to ask you, Mr. Toscano, is that Ms. Ween had said that the claim is still pending, and I wanted to know if you could update the board with respect to where this is in the legal process.
Sure. Ms. Ween is correct. The matter is still pending. It is in the Office of Administrative Law. She did make reference to an application for emergent relief that was denied by the courts, and that proceeding, I expressed the sentiment that was, has been shared here at these public meetings by both the administration and the board itself, that there should be more vocational opportunities available at the Monmouth County Vocational School. I shared that that is not a decision that is within our purview, this board's purview to make. That's not something we can weigh in on. I did express to Mrs. Ween's counsel at the close of the argument that really, the passion that Mrs. Ween showed in her application before the court should also be taken and brought to the attention of the Monmouth County Vocational and Technical School, because, you know, the class size number that she referenced, again, we didn't have any way to verify that, but we took her at her word for that. You know, at present, the board has been briefed on the matter for emergent relief and the basis, you know, for the determination. The board's also been briefed on the prior decision of the Executive County Superintendent on the matter, and so that's where the matter is at this time.
Mark, if I can, please. This matter is under litigation?
Yes.
And I don't think it's appropriate at this time to really talk about it?
Yeah.
I'm not taking any side, but as a matter of policy, we have to be very careful.
Well, that was going to be my recommendation, Mr. Astetola, yes.
Okay. All right. Sue Fisher from Howell.
(inaudible) working? You're on. Sue Fisher, Lady from French University, Howell. I would like to address the board tonight on the US Supreme Court decision on Janus regarding non-organized union membership and for the member rights of public schools. Hopefully, different topics. I think they're going to be discussing this later in the meeting, so I'd like to just put some things out there for the board to consider when we discuss it. I did send an email, I think it's back to Mr. Sampson, and I apologize, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, I responded to you.
Yes. I didn't know there was going to be a board meeting, so I figured I'll just put it out there. I had the pleasure of reading the entire Janus ruling this summer on a rainy day. I actually read all 83 pages, even though the legal terminology is not my forte, but it was very interesting. This came out at the end of June by the Supreme Court. In that decision, Justice Alito basically were just going to read a synopsis, the majority, that the procedure of mandatory union fee deductions from pay without employee consent violates the First Amendment and cannot continue. Neither an agency fee nor any other payment to the union may be deducted from a nonmembered wages, nor may any other attempt be made to collect such a payment unless the employee of finally consent to pay. By agreeing to pay, nonmembers are basically waiving their First Amendment rights, and such a waiver cannot be presumed. Justice Ween Court was very clear that employees have to affirmatively opt in to do
All right, Sue Fisher, from Howell.
Sue Fisher, waiting for questions from Howell. I would like to address the board tonight on the US Supreme Court decision on Janus regarding non-organized union membership and for non-member rights and stuff, these are only different topics. I think they're gonna be discussing this later in the meeting, so I'd like to just put some things out there for the board to consider when we discuss it. I did send an email, I think it's back to Mr. Sampson, and I apologize, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, I responded to you.
Yes. I didn't know there was gonna be a board meeting, so I figured I'll just put it out there. I had the pleasure of reading the entire Janus ruling this summer on a rainy day. I actually read all 83 pages, even though the legal terminology is not my forte, but it was very interesting. This came out at the end of June by the Supreme Court. In that decision, Justice Alito basically were just gonna read a synopsis, the majority, that the procedure of mandatory union fee deductions from pay without employee consent violates the First Amendment and cannot continue. Neither an agency fee nor any other payment to the union may be deducted from a non-member's wages, nor may any other attempt be made to collect such a payment unless the employee of finally consent to pay. By agreeing to pay, non-members are basically waiving their First Amendment rights, and such a waiver cannot be resumed. The Justice Supreme Court was very clear that employees have to affirmatively opt in to dues-paying union membership, and therefore a waiver of their First Amendment speaks its right. I also had the pleasure, honoring the gay this summer, of reading the New Jersey Workplace Democracy Enhancement Act. It was introduced in March, but passed, signed into law in May. The New Jersey amendment basically says that employees must opt out, to be exact, opposite of what the Supreme Court ruling said. They must opt out of dues-paying union membership within 10 days of their anniversary date of, excuse me, of hire, and if they fail to do that on time, they will have to wait until their next anniversary date. It does not, however, say that the boards of education cannot inform their employees of their rights. The New Jersey law obviously contradicts the Supreme Court ruling and is very likely to be challenged. With that in mind, I would like to ask the board, the board direct the appropriate person in your administration, at this point I'm assuming it would be the business administrator, who's in charge of payroll, to draft a letter and email, a general outline of the Janus decision and the New Jersey Workplace Enhancement Act amendment, to all their employees, all their union employees, informing them of this new option. Mainly, if they wish to continue their dues-paying union membership, that they indicate that in writing and submit it to payroll or business administrator, and in the alternative, if they wish to not be a dues-paying member, that they indicate that in writing as well to payroll. This has to be done soon, because many, many employees, their anniversary date of hire is coming up, which would be September 1st. Employees should also be told that if they fail to respond one way or the other, they would automatically be removed from dues-paying union membership, specifically because the Supreme Court decision takes precedence over the New Jersey law because of the constitutional right of freedom of speech and love. Like I said before, I think the Workplace Enhancement Act is definitely going to be challenged. In the meantime, I think it's important for all boards, and you might ask, why did you come to us? I live here, I'm a taxpayer, I'm a public employee, I love the Freehold Regional District. My daughter does humanities, my son's in MBS. You guys seem to get it right most of the time, so it would be great to see you take some action in this matter. For nothing else other than information, let your employees know what their rights are, because a lot of public employees in the state do not even know the Supreme Court ruling, which is kind of sad, but it's the truth. So, again, I ask that you, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm gonna go back to my work for a second. In the meantime, it's important for the board, all boards, this board, to uphold their employees' constitutional First Amendment right. With the Janus ruling and the law of the land at this point notifying employees of their rights and asking them to affirmatively choose to be in or out, would comply with actually both laws, so you might make both sides happy. I have two sources that I think are deliparant to the school boards and to the administration. It's very brief. The first one is from the New Jersey School Boards Association. What should school districts be doing now to be in compliance with the law? Response: School districts should immediately cease deduction of agency fees from non-members. However, the board's obligation to collect dues from members who wish to continue their membership in the union remains unaffected. The second one is from the Foundation for Educational Administration. I have a colleague who's going through his administrative certificate, and he sat through the legal ethics portion, the NJPSA FPA, does that sound familiar? And Slide 20, in the power presentation, quote, I'm quoting, "Consent of deduction of union dues must be clearly and affirmatively given, opt in, not opt out." Slide 25, the Workplace Democracy Enhancement Act may be unenforceable in light of Janus decision. So, with that in mind, I really ask you to consider this, and I hope someone, I'm looking actually forward to someone making a motion that this will be taken into consideration.
Well, thank you for your comments, and I just wanted to say that this is an issue that has been thought about and discussed, and that is the reason why we have it on the agenda for this evening under our new business. We're gonna have our legal counsel talk about this issue.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for coming, we appreciate it. Okay, Raj Gardilla.
So, is it possible not to give the same test paper for the FRHSD magnet school entrance exam every year? Only few students that attended certain test preparation centers that are exposed to the test papers, and other students who did not go to the test preparation center, or any test preparation center will be disadvantaged. I strongly request administration to give, give an exam every year, so that kids who are taking the test will be at the same level they get.
We are exploring at this time.
We're actually looking at a different assessment.
Yeah, I hope both sides are aligned on this, that was so sad to see that. And second point, FRHSD results are not transparent like MCVSD. FRHSD will inform you only if the student is selected or waitlisted. I strongly request administration to give the same level of detail like MCVSD or more, and set a standard for the state for the transparency.
Can you clarify that? I'm sorry.
I missed the second one, I'm sorry.
Yes, yeah.
When, once you write the test, you gotta let us see that you are accepted or you're waitlisted.
Or waitlisted.
No other information.
What was the county?
You see, you have to break down a form and mark your card or all those details. I mean, even if you take a SAT test nowadays, you have a request, a question paper, and the answer is "home," so we need a little more transparency in there.
It's not, it's not an issue of transparency. There's a number of students who are scored, and they're scored on a norm, and it's crystal clear how they, how they branch out for us. What we do tell parents always is if you're not, if you are waitlisted, you know, traditional trajectories of if that has moved up or not, and we talk to any individual parent who has questions or concerns, and spend a lot of time whether they were accepted, denied, or waitlisted.
But it's better to know that, I mean, the details are right, and it's hard, if we can, if we have a little more transparency, and then four hundred percent show what everybody has, so we will know what expectations are, especially for.
That's not appropriate, sir. That's not appropriate.
That's my recommendation, it's nothing you probably.
Thank you.
And our part is, are there any, like, independent surveys conducted from the parents of the magnet school who are graduated from the schools? So that you don't, you can know which programs are working and which programs are not working. So, is there any independent surveys are conducted?
I think you had the graduates. Did you?
How, how are they graduated?
So, we surveyed, we surveyed about, we surveyed all of our graduating classes of 2012 to 15, about their general high school experience, and had about 1,600 responses to that survey. The term "working or not" is an individual viewpoint, and every story is different, so we asked them about their experiences and what could have been better, what went well, where they struggled, where they didn't, where they felt supported, and things of that nature.
I'm specifically asking for a touch on the magnet schools, whether the program is working, and if you're spending so much money on these programs. Which program is working and which program is not working? If it's working, you spend more money and expand on it. If it's not working, we are.
What do you mean by "working"?
I don't know, if the parents who are graduated are happy with the program, if they're happy, then you can, I mean, if the people who are graduated from this program, so that would be the best gauge, I think, the parents of the.
We review our programs on an annual basis and make determinations of where we're gonna spend our capital and whether it's worth it for the outcomes that are received or not. So, those programs are reviewed, tweaked, updated on an annual basis.
I mean, if there are any surveys are conducted that should be put out, so we can take a look at it, and then give a, their parents can make a decision. Rather than conducting so many informative sessions that's spending a lot of time, to see how the people, how the parents are happy with those programs or not, that gets a little more information than having so many informative sessions.
Sir, we survey our parents frequently, but the one parent's answer to a program might be particularly different than your answer as well, so we would never put out a general survey of answers, which frankly, we could twist however we wanted, which would not serve the purpose, and sell our programs that way. We try to take a much more authentic approach. We certainly reach out to our parents and our students on an annual basis and review those programs, and we go from there.
Alumni also.
Can I comment? I think a lot has to do with the district sees, it went through the enrollment. How many people are applying? I think in the past, if something had a very low enrollment, we found that maybe we shouldn't have that academy or learning center or whatever, but I think a lot has to do with the enrollment because it's a reputation of what the past was and as it graduates, and the parents know the programs because they're hearing it from everybody else that are in the district. So, I think the enrollment has a lot to do, and how many people are applying, you know, into these specific programs.
And I'd like to add, if I might, I sat on the Curriculum and Instruction Committee for a couple of years, and they, this is a very data-driven school district, and a lot of the reports that we saw, and it would be up to Mr. Sampson, the board president and board attorney, maybe to comment later, or after maybe you make a public records request, to see if those are documents that can be shared publicly under the law, but retention rates, like Mrs. Lavin was saying, how many people apply to each of the different programs, the acceptances, the waitlists, who stays in the program through all the four years, so what, you know, so we track the interest and the retention and the graduation rates, just like we do in general terms for our overall population. And those are really good indicators, those data points are really good indicators of the success of programs.
Thank you, these are my recommendations, it's up to you.
Yes, there is information, and if you're interested in it, you know, you can make this.
I agree, but these are very far in the issue.
I'd just like to know that there is good information out there, and these folks really dig deep into the data points.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone, for coming down, we really do appreciate it. All right, moving forward on the agenda, would like to take as one item, items G1 through K4 on one ballot.
And that's as amended, Mr. President?
As amended.
Mike, you had something that you had a problem with, can you segregate that one?
Yeah, sure, where that, we'll, all right. What then I would want to do is take G1 through K4 with the, and hold out G17 and have a separate vote on G17. Now, G17 is actually a shared services agreement, CJ Pride, and board members got an attachment on that. So, we're gonna do that, we're gonna take in one ballot everything G1 through K4, we're gonna take out G17 for right now, and we're gonna have a separate vote on that.
And that is also G1 through K4, all as amended?
As amended, yes, I am sorry. All right. Does anybody want to put forth a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion.
Second.
All right. Roll call.
Mr. Asatola?
Yes, if that's excluding G17, yes.
Correct. Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Couter?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
First motion's passed.
Okay.
G17.
Now, with respect to G17, this is approval of the CJ Pride agreement. It's a shared services agreement for 2018, 2019. As I had mentioned before, all the board members receive this in their package before the meeting. Does anybody want to put forth a motion adopting a resolution to enter into this shared services agreement?
Motion. Second.
Roll call.
No, no discussion.
No.
There was no second? There was a second, just discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me start that. Discussion. Anybody have any comments on this?
Well, I know that you did, Mike, so why don't you start?
I was letting other people go before me.
I'll tell you what, why don't you start with it, and then I can add to it, if I don't think I can complete with you.
Okay, so basically, this agreement is, Freehold Regional's entering into an agreement, I think it looks like there's about 18 other boards of education in school districts, Monmouth, it mostly seems to be in Mercer County, I see Millburn's on here too, I believe. And basically, this agreement is recognizing the need to recruit highly qualified educators for the 21st century, and essentially, there would be a payment in here of $2,000.
Yeah, that's, that's the initial payment.
Right, the initial payment is two, is $2,000, and then after that, it's $100 a year, I believe. And my feeling on this is that for, we're a very attractive place to work, and the bottom line is, I didn't want to spend $2,000 additional taxpayer dollars on this because I don't think Freehold Regional needed it to attract quality applicants to their positions.
I think they'll, I interject, I think the importance of this program, 30 something years of education, and I come from Asprey Park, which I've dedicated, undergrad, high school, and I think it's very important to recruit diverse, and this is one way, a vehicle for our human resources to find diverse candidates. And when you graduate from college, you graduate school, you all have degrees, but some people are afraid to apply to a regional like us. They may go to the urban school, where we have so many resources here, so that's why I love this type of program, and we've been successful with it. So, anything that makes it easier for human resources to find diverse candidates, good degrees and backgrounds, I'm all for.
Mr. Sampson, would you mind just giving a little, you know, background about the program and when we joined and?
Sure. So, it's a consortium of multiple districts. I think it really started out of Mercer County, and a group of districts out there initially got together because that they felt that their applicant pool lacked diversity, and that they weren't doing enough to actually go seek that out, and so they banded together to host large-scale fairs as a collaborative. We had talked to a few members that had had good experience with it, leaders from some of those districts, and Dr. Sharp went out and met with some of those folks last year and came back, and we elected to join it, you know, looking that you can never recruit enough.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, does our application pool lack diversity? I know that, off the top of my head, if we advertised for, let's say, a history teacher in Freehold Regional for somebody, you know, Colts neck high school or whatever, for somebody that retires, and correct me if I'm wrong, I really don't know, we'll get somewhere in the neighborhood of 300 applicants. How could we lack diversity if we get that level of number of applicants?
Yeah, so, well, history's the, certainly one of the outliers with the sheer number of applicants. We are unfortunately a dime a dozen as social studies folks. However, I'm a social studies guy. However, I do think in many of the application processes, we do lack diversity from time to time. I think that it's very different to go out and to meet individuals face-to-face and to have conversations with them rather than the traditional paper screen only, and this affords us an opportunity to get out there and dialogue with folks and not just you being. being proactive, rather than reactive with whatever you receive. And one of the things that, you know, I've always learned from the places that I've been in, is that the more, the more opportunities that you engage in like this, especially where you get out and about. So, Dr. Sharp, this is one of like 10 or 11 things that different teams will go through over the course of the year. Most, many of them are free. This was the initial startup cost, and then it's $100 bucks a year. But it's really about the opportunity to engage in some extended dialogue with candidates that you can build a connection with, and then bring into the district, rather than just wait for them to apply. So, but there are certainly jobs that we post that lack a diverse applicant pool from time to time.
Okay, fine. I got it. Okay, we're good.
All right. Roll call.
Mr. Acetola?
I'm going to approve that because of Mr. Sampson's answer. He had more information than I certainly did.
Mrs. Capiello?
We always want diversity.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Kauzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Thank God, yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
No. Uh, okay.
Eight, eight, one. Excuse me. We good?
Yes. Okay. Moving on to old business.
Can I, can I? Oh, no, we need the new business. I'm sorry.
Okay, old business. All right, new business.
Before we, before Mr. Toscano discussed Janice, I just want to recognize two folks in the audience, because they are officially approved right now. So, first, Isabel Ramirez, if you can stand up. So, Isabel will be the new guidance supervisor at Freehold Township High School, so congratulations. Isabel comes from the Fair Lawn Public Schools. She's been a counselor for 14 years, has been a coordinator up there, has a wealth of terrific experience, and I dragged her down to my office a couple times to have some extended conversation, so we feel really good about her addition to the school district. And this is the, the old adage in New Jersey, you know, don't ever burn a bridge in New Jersey, because especially in education, we're all, we're all related. As, as I was talking to her, I said, you know, Fair Lawn, I said, oh, so-and-so, your superintendent up there just became, and her superintendent had been my building supervisor when I was a high school principal way back when, so had nothing but positive things to say. So, Isabel, welcome, welcome aboard. And I'd ask Dr. Brett Pellegrino to take, stand up, please. So, Brett will be the new academic supervisor for special services at Freehold High School. So, Freehold High School, Mr. Moses? So, Dr. Pellegrino comes to us from the Old Bridge Public Schools. He's been a school psychologist there for 15 years. References couldn't say enough about how he creates a welcoming culture for both staff and students, and what that looks like, and how he was a problem solver. So, we know that Brett will be a welcome addition to school district. So, Brett, welcome aboard.
Next issue on new business I wanted to have discussed is, I'd like our legal counsel to address the news that was referenced earlier about the Janice decision, and what we as a board really need to know.
Okay. Just for note, just so I don't forget, we do have another new business item, just to, for the HIV and exec session, so I just wanted to say that, so that I'll do this, and then just so we don't forget that before we leave.
Sounds good.
Because I certainly don't want anybody's eardrums to start to bleed. So, as Ms. Fisher did state, there was the Supreme Court's decision in Jan, in June in the matter involving a public employee who objected to having to pay what is commonly referred to as either an agency fee or a representation fee. And those terms are interchangeable based on how they are used in the district. To sum it up as succinctly as possible, what they are is, even if you, as a public employee, did not want to be a member of a public employee association, or a private labor association, you were forced to pay for the representation services that that association provided for you on your behalf at the bargaining table. That was calculated out to be approximately 85% of the normal dues. So, if the normal annual dues were $100, you would be charged $85, because the theory was that you received the benefits of the services provided by the labor association while they were at the bargaining table. So, they were bargaining on your behalf, even if you did not want them to. That was a precedent that was long established. It had been challenged and previously upheld by the Supreme Court. It had been around since approximately the mid-'70s, approximately 40 years. And so, when the Supreme Court issued its Janice decision in June, it was overturning approximately 40 years of precedent. All collective negotiation agreements here in the Freehold Regional High School District, as well as across the state of New Jersey, do have provisions, or had provisions in them, that were either called agency fee or representation fee. That's why I'm kind of using the terms interchangeably. It just depend upon how it was entitled in each particular school district. In our, in the case here, I believe our provisions were called representation fees. And again, those were folks who had taken the steps to try to affirmatively opt out their local association, but because of both the prior Supreme Court precedent and New Jersey law, they were required to pay what was deemed their fair share, that representation fee, which was 85%. So, what happened as a result of the Janice decision? There were some that initially believed that the Janice decision resulted in everybody that was in a public, and I'm just speaking public, I'm not going to speak to private unions, because again, we're here, this board is concerned with public unions, that everyone in a public union was automatically out. And they were out unless they opted in. That was not correct. That is not the interpretation of Janice. Janice was limited to the application as it resulted to those employees that were forced to pay the representation fee or the agency fee. Those who had tried to opt out, but were charged the 85% of the dues. And again, I'm using approximate numbers for that. I don't know what the number actually was. Upon the issuance of the Janice decision, the local boards were required to stop collecting those agency or representation fees from those individuals. I asked, I had conversations with Mr. Boyce, I had conversations with Mr. Sampson, and we did that here in Freehold Regional. In fact, I don't believe we had any employees that had taken that step. So, prior to Janice, we didn't have any of any employees that would fall under that agency or representation fee provision. So, all of our employees were 100% dues-paying members. We have seven bargaining units here in the Freehold Regional High School District. We have good relationships with all seven. We have had collaborative, we don't see eye to eye and everything, but we have had collaborative, professional, courteous discussions with each other constantly. We had those same discussions with the issuance of the Janice decision and how it applied. We made it very clear, in collaboration with those groups, what our interpretation of the Janice decision was, and how we would implement it. I would note that there were a minority of school districts who did take the position that what you heard from Ms. Fisher, from the NJPSA, that everybody was out unless they affirmatively opted back in. There was an emergency application filed with the New Jersey Public Employees Relations Committee, PERC, and a restraining order was issued against all of those districts that were doing that. So, that interpretation seems, you know, at, right now, appears to be wrong. So, the way we have proceeded of, in having a very conservative approach, that we are, we are going to take the approach of reading Janice very literally, that it applies to the representation fee individuals only. Support for that is grounded in longstanding New Jersey tradition in public employee relations. It is the association, and it has always been the association, whether it is an NJEA, an AFL-CIO, NJPSA, NJ, or AFL, or any of the other groups that we work with. The association provides the list of membership to the district, and then the district would deduct the dues. Under PERC, it is the association's responsibility to handle membership and to communicate that. That has not changed. The new, what has changed a little bit is the provisions of the New Jersey, excuse me, Workplace Democracy Enhancement Act. You heard that reference. That was a bill that was passed in New Jersey as it pertained to, in anticipation of the decision in Janice. Whether all of the provisions in that bill will eventually survive legal challenge, sitting here today, I don't know the answer to that. Nobody knows the answer to that. Will it be challenged? I think it most likely will be. But I will say this, there are provisions in that Workplace Democracy Enhancement Act that are directly aimed at public employers like school districts. And we are not allowed to either directly or indirectly encourage or discourage any employee from joining, forming, or insisting in employee organization. In essence, membership is the responsibility of the association. So, we are leaving that to our associations here. It is their responsibility to communicate with their members. We have communicated that to the leadership, to the designated representatives of each of the groups here in the district. They know our position on this. We've been consistent with that from the outset, and as of today, that interpretation, you know, is correct. If there's subsequent decisions that come down that force a change in that, we will adapt and we will apply it. But that, in essence, is kind of a summary of where everything is with the Janice, how we are, how we have thus far responded to it, and kind of where everything stands in the state of New Jersey right now.
So, if I'm reading this correctly, listen to you, it's up to the union and the teacher, not us to say to them, you don't have to pay your dues, you don't have to pay your union dues?
Well, I want to know, is it up to the union? It's up to the union, not us?
Okay. Janice took out anybody that was a representation fee, because those people had taken action to affirmatively opt out already. If any employees wish to opt out, I can tell you, I'll give you an example. If, you brought up a teacher. I know that the NJEA has, which is the largest public union in the state of New Jersey, and they represent, among other groups, teachers. They have put together a form and a checklist that if employee wants to opt out, they have to sign and return to the NJEA, or to the, and I'm assuming it's through the local association, which handles the membership, and then they hand that membership list to, in our case, Mr. Boyce's office, and then dues are deducted accordingly. That's, that's, that's how that process generally works, and how that process still works.
Is that an annual?
It is annual. It is annual, and it is, it is annual, and the respective associations, I'm not sure the time of year, Mr. Boyce, when they give you that list.
Well, there's also a new employee process hired throughout the course of the year that will receive authorization from the employee to deduct. And then there's a, there's a monthly reconciliation of dues deduction and remitted to NJEA. So, it's an ongoing process.
Well, what's the difference between union dues and what you're talking about? This is two separate things?
It is two separate things. It is, it is, there's the union dues, again, think of it as 100%. That's, that's $100 a year. That, that's the, that's what all of our, our members are paying. What the Janice decision was talking about was the individuals that didn't want to have to pay that $100, but were required under the law at that time to pay $85.
$85. Oh, so it is the union dues? It's not two separate entities here?
No, it's, it is the union dues.
Oh, okay. I thought you had it separate for like the legal aspect of the union dues.
No.
Okay.
I have a couple of just follow-up questions.
Sure.
At the beginning, you said that there was an initial interpretation that said that everybody was out. Who said, like, where was that interpretation from?
That interpretation, there is a group of attorneys, like my fir, like what I do, I represent public bodies. There was a minority group that did espouse and recommend that interpretation.
Kind of like a think tank?
Kind of like a think tank. Exactly. The AMSPA is the group, and I apologize, I don't know exactly what it stands for.
And then you said that once Janice came down, all the agency fee folks, whether in our district or statewide, they were pulled out automatically for their?
No more collection.
Correct, okay.
And in fact, in fact, and I apologize for interrupting, but I also believe that the NJEA did send letters to all the school business administrators around the state as it related to any of the agency fees that may have been coming to them for anyone that would have been in the NJEA. So, I believe that letter was also mass-generated around the state following Janice.
So, what type of notice, if you're aware of any, were the, those employees given that there was going to no longer be any dues collection on their behalf?
The, um, we don't have any here. I, I believe in other school districts, I'm not sure how they, they've dealt with it. Most of my districts have not had any representation fee individuals that opted out. If there were those individuals, you know, they'll be candidly seeing, I guess, a larger paycheck in September, if they weren't told. If they weren't told, if they weren't met and told by the respective payroll service in that district. Yes.
And then you mentioned a couple of cases. Who filed, like, who is the party in the per? Sorry.
No, it's okay. It was, I, the, the districts, um, one second.
Was it, I mean, was it a?
Yeah, it's actually.
Like a, a public entity body, or?
It was. Well, no, it was, it was a couple of associations that obviously brought the matter. It actually was originating out of South Jersey. I think it was Delanco, the Teachers Union, the Delanco School District. Yes, yes.
And they were saying what against the CC?
They, they, they were the minority where they had, they, again, and I apologize, I'm not, I, I, I believe it was the Delanco School District. If it wasn't, I will stand corrected. But they were taking the position that following Janice, everybody was out of the union. They were no longer members of the union unless all of those people affirmatively walked into the business administrator's office and gave them written authorization, said, I want to get back in. And that, that was that interpretation that was stopped by PERC.
Okay, I have a question.
And that's, that matter's still continuing as well.
I don't understand the reasoning behind this, because they're going to have legal services. So, why are they opting out and then paying 85%?
They still get the hundred.
They still get the same services as everybody else that pays the 100%?
Well, now, I will tell you now, just based on reviewing the sheet that the NJEA is having members sign that they opt out, they will not receive, if they opt out, they will not receive legal, legal services. They will not receive all of the various programs and options and consultative services that the NJEA does offer.
Okay. See now, I have to admit that I spent my rainy days, I guess, somehow, as Ms. Fisher did, because I'm a bit of a geek in this regard, sorry, just called you a geek. But I read the decision. I didn't read the dissent. I didn't read the dissent, so you got me there. I just read the majority opinion, I read the New Jersey thing. I saw New Jersey School Board said something. They did, they did a podcast, I wasn't able to catch the podcast. But they're, what they said, they have this, a nice FAQ?
I've seen it.
Quick or last question?
Yep.
And they, I thought, I remember them saying in the FAQ... And they, I thought, I remember them saying in the FAQ that the employees, even if they no longer are dues-paying, I'm just going to use that, that they still receive representation and they get the benefits of the collective bargaining agreement if they have a grievance.
They can participate in the grievance procedure.
It's questionable if there's like a disciplinary, if they get, you know, if they get legal representation in a disciplinary matter.
And that...
But they get the, it seems like they still continue to get the big portion of the benefit.
Yeah, just, I'm sorry.
What I was going to say is, I don't know, as, sitting here, as a matter of fact, like, I don't know how the NJ is approaching it. I would think that they would still get the benefits arguably of collective bargaining, which is what they would have received before. But again, I don't know the delineated services that the NJ provides. I don't know how they're approaching that. And that would not be, you know, in bargaining and dealing with associations, you know, there is, there is law that we are only allowed to deal with the designated representative of the group, just like they can only deal with our designated representative. We don't get to choose who the association's designated representative is, no more than they get to choose who ours is.
So here's the interesting news break as I look all this up, right? The restraining order was filed on August 13th, and they are due back at PERC on August 29th.
Yeah, it's still going, yeah.
This is unfolding, literally as it's being discussed. And it was Delanco and Chatsworth.
I was right, okay. Thank you. I don't know where Chad's worth is.
But there was one thing that Ms. Fisher said that kind of bothered me a little bit. That she said that a lot of employees may not even be aware of the decision, and, you know, I just wonder if there's, you know, what is the, what problems, I mean, we violate, we violate the New Jersey law. Just a notice went out basically just saying, well, it's public information anyway, what Janus is, what the New Jersey workforce, et cetera, enhancement, whatever it is. And because you weigh that against a person's First Amendment rights, and if I had to choose between following the United States Supreme Court on a, you know, freedom of speech or a questionable New Jersey law that might be challenged, I'm going to defer to the Supreme Court, so.
So I would offer this. If the district takes affirmative action and asserts itself into that process, then the New Jersey Workplace Democracy Enhancement Act gives an automatic vehicle for the associations to come after the district, which is a straight-up and unfair labor practice charge, enjoined public postings, cease and desist. On the flip side...
Alleging.
Alleging violations from actively encouraging or discouraging.
If you present both sides, because I know when we used to vote on the budget, we couldn't like advocate for the budget.
Advocate a position.
And so, but we would just provide the information about the budget.
So we are not allowed to encourage or discourage.
But if you do both sides?
They don't want us involved.
Okay.
They don't want us involved. I mean, that's really what the Workplace Democracy Enhancement Act, they being the state...
The state legislature.
Yes, they do not want us involved as it relates to matters of membership. Now, should there be any sort of challenge that comes down the pike, and this is just speculative, if there is any sort of challenge, it is again to be against the association that is refusing to let them out. The question being, I said, I didn't know if the Workplace Democracy Enhancement Act would be enforceable as that related to the, you have to opt out within 10 days of your anniversary date. Whether that's going to be enforceable, I don't know the answer to that. But if, for example, that is brought, that challenge is brought against the association, not against the district, we take a no-lo contend-o approach. We get the membership lists, we do as we normally have, and we do it in accordance with the law.
I appreciate all that information because based on, you know, what was said, I was inclined to just, you know, make the motion and ask that that letter goes out because, like I said, as between following the Supreme Court ruling that came after a previously enacted New Jersey law, I would defer to the State Supreme Court, I mean, the United States Supreme Court. But if it comes down to that and exposing this district to litigation and liability, then I have to defer to my district and my county. And hope that people are watching the video tonight and will get the word out.
Okay. Okay.
Just don't forget the new business item, Mr. Messinger.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, do you want me to do it?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So there will be a new business item, new business number one, resolved by the board to overturn the HIB determination as discussed in executive session.
Okay. Anything else that anybody wants to talk about with respect to new business? Mr. Acetola?
No, but I want to put forth a motion as soon as possible on that resolution.
Well, see, that's why I wanted to bring it up because I think the administration would need some direction as to what exactly you want done.
On that resolution.
Just the HIB first.
Oh, the HIB. I'm sorry, I was talking about something else, Carl, I apologize.
Oh, no, no. We'll discuss that.
Okay.
So, yeah, we just need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Carl, that was...
Roll call. Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mr. Corolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Spankhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lathan?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes. All right. Anything else in new business? All right, then, we'll move on to N. Adjournment. Does anybody want to...
Second.
I'll give that to Jen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So be it.
Mrs. Jewell, can I...